Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for being here, our new home away from home for a while, while we renovate the chambers at City Hall. We'll all be looking forward to that. It's great to have a few visitors here, not many, and a lot of our city brethren, so great to have you here. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order here on November 14th, 2023, and I'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Present.
Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Here. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Wilson will do the prayer. Vice versa, we'll do the invocation first and then the pledge.
Okay, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here for the many blessings that we have. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work. We come today asking you for your guidance and support as we begin this meeting. Please grant us wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any deletions to the agenda or additions? Or deletions, just deletions.
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, great. So we'll just move right on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member saw requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless any commissioner would like any item removed for separate discussion. So I'll go ahead and ask the city clerk to please read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the October 24th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, receive and file documents. Appointment of Ian McVicker to the Paducah McCracken County Riverport Authority to replace Mike Sims, whose term has expired. This term shall expire September 26th, 2027. Appointment of Michael Campbell to the Historical and Architectural Review Commission to replace Greg McCord, who resigned. This term shall expire March 9th, 2024. Personnel actions. The municipal order adopting contract modification number five to the construction contract with Midstates Construction Incorporated for the Robert Cherry Civic Center in the amount of $4,790.15 and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract modification and all other documents related to same. Municipal order authorizing an addendum to the lease agreement with Heritage Operating LLC, DBA Cremation Society of Paducah and authorizing the mayor to execute said addendum and all documents related to same. Municipal order adopting contract modification number one to modify the scope of the contract with Chambers Roofing Company Incorporated for the market house roof replacement for an increase of $1,288.17 and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract modification and all other documents related to same. Municipal order authorizing the application for a creating vibrant communities grant through the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's Transportation Development Planning Assistance Program and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for Kentucky Equitable Entrepreneurial Ecosystems and Rural Communities Grant through the Main Street America in the amount of $5,000 for technical assistance and $1,500 IEDC stipend for professional certification, accepting any grant funds awarded and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. Municipal order accepting the bid of Galls LLC for the purchase of uniforms for the Paducah Fire Department employees and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same.
So moved. Second. Carl.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Good. So we have two municipal orders this evening, and the first one is one we've been working through for quite some time. It's the Robert Cherry Civic Center and the fee schedule that we're going to work on, and so I'll ask Amy to, well, first of all, I'll ask the city clerk to read it and then let Amy go over with us.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners adopting municipal order entitled, the municipal order setting new rental rates for the Robert Cherry Civic Center located in the city of Paducah, Kentucky pursuant to Chapter 70-32 subsection C, Parks and Recreation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk. So a couple of meetings ago, we talked about Civic Center policies, procedures, operations, and specifically the fees, and since that time, this is kind of where we've landed. These fees were proposed and presented to the last commission meeting a few weeks or a few months ago, and those haven't changed. But something that we did decide to do was offer an individual rate. This would allow our city residents who are interested in hosting an event for a family function at the Civic Center to have a discounted rate. So as you can see here, we've got full-day rentals, $750 a day for Monday through Thursday rentals, $1,200 a day for Friday, Saturday, and I didn't update this, we did decide to add Sundays in there. So it'll be Friday through Sunday, $1,200 per day. If you decide that you wanted to rent the facility on a holiday, that would be $1,500 a day. We are going to offer half-day rentals, only available during the week, Monday through Thursday, and you can have it for up to five hours for $500. And then we still have the nonprofit rate. We did increase that from 10% to 20%. There are some stipulations for both the nonprofit rate and the individual rate that are included in our application packet as well as our internal policies. But basically, for nonprofits, they have to be located in the city limits, and they have to provide proof of nonprofit status. For the individuals, again, that is somebody like you or I that want to have a birthday party or a wedding, a reception, something like that, for our family event, and we live in the city limits, then we are eligible for a 20% discount on those fees. And that is for weekday or weekend fees. So that does, that just kind of crosses all board or across the board there. And then for events that span multiple days, we will have the initial rate of the $750 per day or $1,200 per day, but the second day and every day after that would be $500. There is a 50% deposit required at the time of the reservation, and then there's a $500 refundable deposit as well. And then this is just kind of explaining those nonprofit rates and individual rates so that people understand what we're hoping to be able to achieve. We want to be able to make sure that we're providing this center to everyone, but at the same time, we recognize that while we're raising the rates and trying to be, kind of come into the market and the trends, we also want to make sure that it's affordable. So that's kind of why we came up with these 20% discount rates with the criteria that's shown here.
Okay, and so, and also, this includes, these rights includes cleanup?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. So we will be staffing all events with our Parks and Recreation staff. We'll have full-time and part-time staff available. We will do the setup of the tables and chairs based on a floor plan requested. We will do all the cleanup at the end of the night. We'll take the trash out. The reservation is only available, or is only responsible for cleaning up what they brought in. So any kind of decorations, any kind of food, anything like that. We are also going to have a preferred caterers list, but it will not be required. So folks that want to use a preferred caterer will have, will have a list of people that are compliant with city license, have their health department permits, things like that. But if they don't want to use a preferred caterer, they are welcome to do like potluck or something like that.
Okay, great. This, of course, the Cherry Civic Center, you know, since we began renovations, it's been a long time coming, so we're getting closer. Do we have a, do we have a date?
Our original contract date is for December 28th. We are anticipating probably a delay as we deal with ADA parking and then ingress egress, those ADA accessible ramps. We haven't been given a timeline yet, but we do anticipate that that will probably push us back a few weeks.
And as far as the parking lot goes, that's not going to happen this year, I would assume.
Correct. Our goal is to get the accessibility to the building taken care of in this contract and then come back and address the parking lot when asphalt plants reopen in the spring.
I thought we had said that we were going to try to get it done this year.
We took all opportunities available to us to make that happen. It just wasn't going to work. Wasn't able to get that done based on timing and the scope of work that was being done.
So the Civic Center would then open, you know, let's, let's say, worst-case scenario, February 1st. I don't know. Do you have any idea what kind of extension they're going to ask for?
We do not, not at this time.
Do you have any feel for it?
I don't. Jeff?
Are there penalties or anything?
I'm sorry?
Are there any penalties for being late?
Yes, there is a $500 per day liquidated damages fee that could be assessed, yes.
Is it going to be assessed?
I think it depends. The parking lot is not necessarily something that, it kind of came to play later in the game, and so it's not necessarily something that is on the contractor, but it's definitely something that we could consider.
And we also had the gas line issue that came into play that caused us some more issues with the parking lot.
Yeah, and one of the things that we found out, just for a little bit of background, as we were kind of working through the design for the parking lot, we kind of found out that even though the Civic Center building would be done, the renovations would be done, accessibility to the building was going to be a big concern, and we were not going to be able to get our certificate of occupancy for the banquet space. So we might be able to do it for the office space, our staff could relocate, but we weren't going to be able to open the building without addressing that ADA parking, and so that's really kind of why we're going to go ahead and roll that into this. It's going to be concrete, so we can go ahead and get it done, but the asphalt part, just, we just couldn't get it wrapped up this year.
Well, what I'd like to ask is maybe you could try to get a date out of them as to when they're going to be finished. I mean, you know, it just, it just keeps going on and on, and I know there's been delays, but could we try to get a date?
Yeah.
A date certain?
Sure.
You know, if it's, you know, I mean, don't give us a date of January 15th if it's not going to be January 15th.
Understand, yeah.
You know, and then give them a date and then hold their feet to the fire and start applying the $500 a day, you know, penalty. I mean, I, I mean, I just think it's just gone on and on and on, and we just need to keep it moving.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to the contractor and see if we can get a good timeline for you.
Okay, that'll be great.
And then in relationship to the parking lot and getting that done, we anticipate that we can do some prep work over the winter. There's a couple of spots in the parking lot that will have to be excavated out and rebuilt, but coming back, we're anticipating two, three days at the max that it would take to do that.
To do the parking lot?
Yeah.
That'd be quick.
Yep.
So what's the earliest that would be, like April or when is it open?
Depends, weather dependent on the plants, but you know, typically you can sometimes get mid-April, you know, that is a good target date in our area.
Let's try to get on their schedule first thing, you know, so.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry I asked all the questions. Nobody else has a question? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Carl.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, the second municipal order has to do with our Main Street designation. City clerk, would you please read it?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners adopting municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a 2024 through 2025 annual agreement between the city of Paducah and Kentucky Main Street related to requirements for the Main Street accreditation.
Second.
Oh, so moved. I'm waiting for Nick.
So moved and second. I just want that order. Nick, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. So each year, we execute a MOU with Kentucky Main Street, which is operated through Kentucky Heritage Council. It outlines the requirements for being in accredited Main Street program, which is the highest designation that you can receive as a Main Street community, and we've been able to maintain that accreditation through our work of the board and the community and the committees that serve through Main Street. I have provided you with a high-level annual report. So we are on fiscal year, Kentucky Main Street's on calendar year, but this year we've had almost 4.5 million invested in downtown as of July. We expect that number to increase for the year-end report. We've had 13 new businesses. We received a state award from the governor for our Cocktail Trail promotion, and we've had our 13 new businesses. So it's been a really successful year. We're really excited to see the program evolve and continue to get more additional community involvement, and we appreciate the support of the commission. I would also like to recognize Jeff Cantor. He's our board chair, and Angela Shade, she's our downtown development specialist. Both of their work is instrumental in Main Street.
So I was somewhere a couple of days ago, and somebody came up to me, and I didn't know him, which is not unusual. Somebody came up to me and said, "I just want to tell you, I was downtown for the Cocktail Trail," or whatever we had the most recent, "and I, we just had the best time." I mean, she just, she just went on and on and on and on about it. So, so I know some of the things that we're doing. Most of the things that we're doing are working, you know, working very well, so.
We are not event organizers. We try to be very strategic in the promotions that we do, so that it's promoting the district and promoting all merchants within the downtown area. So with the Cocktail Trail, we get usually, on average, about 200 people participating that walk through the door of a restaurant, bar, and our retail shops. So it's been a really good collaborative effort, and we've seen a lot of good feedback from the community with specific initiatives.
So we're not event organizers, but we organize that event?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
We did have a further conversation about what Main Street promotions are and what event organizing is.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, so just real quickly, we do promotions to activate the space, to bring that vibrancy to downtown, but that's not our sole focus.
Yeah, I understand that.
We're really focused more on the economic development side, bringing in that investment, leveraging those dollars to create a vibrant downtown.
And we have a full board, and they're all active. Is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Is there a list of those 13 new businesses somewhere?
I would be happy to share that with you.
Okay, great.
Is there, is there a large percentage of these people, of 200 people came down, I guess, assume do they all say dinner? Is there a time for that? Is it one-stop? I know it's jump on, jump off kind of a deal, right?
So it's, it's, you know, open time. They have time. Some people don't complete the entire trail. Some, you know, stop for dinner, do whatever, but it's really kind of an open...
Mix bag.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you. And so if they go to every place, is it true that they get a stamp, or is it, is that, is that?
So we have, we have two. We have a passport series and then we have a lanyard series, but if you complete all of the stops, then you're insured to win a prize.
Do we know how many people do all the stops on any one night?
Probably about 10 or so.
Small, small number, yeah.
Be pretty hard.
Become hard.
Good odds of winning. What'd you say?
Depending on what the alcohol of the month is, it can be a...
Right. We might not want them to. We might not want them to take apart for taking a couple and then have a nice dinner.
Yeah, chief, you know, just hold your ears over there, so.
He could probably tell you how many make all the stops.
As far as the restaurants do monitor that, make sure that individuals aren't being overserved, we really haven't had a lot of issues with public intoxication, either with the Cocktail Trail or with the EDC. I think there was one incident this year, but it was not associated with the Cocktail Trail. It just happened to fall that night, so it occurred that.
Well, this is an understatement. Downtown is, you know, very important to us, and so we really appreciate the work that Main Street is performing and appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, City Clerk, Carl.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have five ordinances tonight that we are going to introduce, and the first one is annexation of four city-owned lots that happen to be in the county and not in the city, and I'll let the city clerk read the municipal order. Are there, I'm sorry, the ordinance.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners introducing ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the city of Paducah, Kentucky by annexing certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the city of Paducah and accurately defining the boundary of said property to be included within said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows: Finalizing the annexation of attractive property adjacent to the present city limits located at 3110 New Holt Road, 3112 New Holt Road, 5065 Concord Avenue, and 5075 Concord Avenue containing 2.57 acres, more or less.
So moved. Second. Josh?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Madam City Clerk. On the map behind you shows the location of these four parcels. This was originally part of the New Holt Road alignment, where the city had bought both those parcels from Ms. Owens back in 2013, and you all may remember that the house burnt down approximately three or four years ago. The city limits is to the right of the parcel where the mall is. We would like to annex in these parcels for potential redevelopment. We don't have anybody specific in mind at this time, but with the new stores that we've got coming into Paducah and that have over the recent years, we feel like this may be a good time to bring those into the city for potential redevelopment.
We own them.
Correct.
We bought them. I remember when we bought that for that part of the road, so we own them. We just hadn't annexed them into the city before now.
Correct. What, what is that? That's the mall, but what, what business is that right there? What store?
That's Burlington. Sheer Carnival in that area.
There's a movie theater in the top, right? Okay, I see. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any other, any questions from the commission? Okay, I think we're good, Josh.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I'll ask the city clerk to read the second ordinance introduction.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners introducing an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of 33,722 square feet of Vermont Street between 124 and 169 Nolan Avenue, between 100 and 137 Vermont Street, and 125 Bridgeview Street, and authorizing the initiation of a request in Circuit Court for the closure and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The city of Paducah has hereby authorized the closure of 33,722 square feet of Vermont Street between 124 and 169 Nolan Avenue, 100 and 137 Vermont Street, and 125 Bridgeview Street, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds from the city of Paducah to the property owners in or abutting the public way to be closed and all other necessary documents to effectuate the closure.
So moved.
Second.
Hi, Rick.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Madam Clerk. Pictures are worth thousands of words. This is the plat, typical plat of a street closure, an alley closure that we might have. This is an undeveloped portion of a right-of-way owned by the city. You can see where the parcels are broken up, and half goes to the adjacent property owner. The property we're talking about is for adjacent to a new development. Out off Lone Oak Road, there's a car wash out there, McDonald's, Popeye's Chicken on Lone Oak Road is behind that. We have a new, we have a new development that's happening just to the south of that property. Brad Walker is doing Trails End Subdivision. Several houses are going in there for that. So that's, this is the process of which he's going through to help that development and move, move this forward.
A single-family homes?
Yes.
Is that, is that actually a street?
It's, it's an existing right-of-way, but no, sir, it is not an improved street. We own it, but it's grass and trees.
Any questions? Everybody good? Okay, I think you can read the next one.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners introducing an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving contract modification number one with Central Paving Company for the 25th Street Improvement Project in an amount of $69,535.09 and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute contract modification number one with Central Paving Company in an amount of $69,535.09 for a new total contract cost of $1,948,327.39.
So moved.
Second.
Behind you is an illustration of the project that extended from Jackson Street all the way over to Alabama Street, starting at the, I guess, north, or northwest and headed to the southeast. On that, that project, that's the area that we improved around the park area, Brook Stadium. uh, around, uh, the park area, Brook Stadium, uh, Inwood Court area. This is, give you some idea of what it looked like before we started. This will give you an idea of what it looks like after it's complete. Uh, the reason for the change order is because, or the contract modification, excuse me, is because, uh, it is a unit price job, not a, not a lump sum job. This is what's, uh, more fair to both the client and the contractor because you only pay for what you get. It's not something that is just a lump sum job. So some of the, some of the units ran over and so the reason for the contract modification is to pay for those units that ran over.
So the, sorry.
Can you show the before and after picture later again?
Sure. That's before.
Okay.
Uh, you see Inwood Court on your right and actually just on the other side of that sign is Twenty-Fourth Street that comes into the side of South Twenty-Fifth Street.
Yeah.
And then if I have this.
It's great.
Uh, but it's the same area. Look up to the left, you'll see Twenty-Fourth Street coming into the side right across from those things.
It looks very good. Great job.
I would encourage you all to maybe go over that area. It looks really great because it encourages, you know, safe walks to school because from the neighborhood, Morgan, uh, School, uh, allows people from Inwood Court to go either to Tillman or Inwood Court or, you know, along good sidewalks and stuff that we made.
Or we could get into a big discussion about sidewalks and I won't take, I won't drag us down that hole. Um, but, uh.
I'll let you not drag us down.
But sidewalks are a huge issue, you know, that we need to stay focused on in the future, you know, it's.
So Rick, the total contract with Central Paving is that one point nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Central Paving is getting that. We're in all this work.
Mm-hmm.
It, it sure looks good through there, right?
Thank you.
Actually, actually, we, we were waiting for the school to complete some of their work because through our own city improve, uh, street, uh, rehabilitation program, we paved Twenty-Fifth Street from Jackson on to Washington Street there in front of the, uh, Innovation Hub too. So it kinda looks like one big project that's separately funded, but it really, really.
Works together.
Yeah.
And then the state did that project on.
Yeah, the state, the state actually did. The state actually did the, well, I wish we had better timing there because we were there working at the same time and some of the detour and traffic was coming on us and vice versa. And we had a lot of people that were frustrated and we, we apologized for it.
Yeah, well, uh, we heard about it, so just, okay, great. Um, City Clerk, I think you can read the next one.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute contract modification number two with Jim Smith Contracting LLC in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars for the addition of eight sluice gates, resulting in a final contract amount of one million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for the floodball flat gate project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute contract modification number two with Jim Smith Contracting LLC to increase the contract in an amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars, resulting in a final contract amount of one million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Members of the Commission, this has been.
We need, we need, um, somebody move.
So moved.
Second.
We're, uh, out of work.
I'd work, yes.
Good. Now, Rick.
Uh, this has been a career-long project for me. Uh, started this project in nineteen ninety-eight with the Corps of Engineers and this happens to be one of the last things. Uh, behind you, you see flat gates of varying sizes. To your right, that's a sixty-inch flat gate and in, in between is a forty-eight. And you can see two new ones next to two old ones. The two older ones are seventy-five years old. Uh, we have no less than sixty of these gates that are spread out over a twelve-mile, uh, levee. And, uh, so some of the ones that we're looking at, uh, we lo- we thought we could get a little bit more life out of. However, with the things on delivery, uh, when you start looking at the time it takes when you order that gate that's to the far right there, it might be eighteen months on delivery. If you have a failure, you don't have eighteen months. Uh, so we decided to go on and replace the ones that we thought we could get a little more life out of and go ahead and replace them now, but just because the way, uh, manufacturing does at this time for those type products. Anything that's a cast.
Where, where is that on? That's probably what you're getting ready to go into?
Well, I look at, I look at that center, look at the center one, right dead center, the biggest one that's got the X, uh, is, is a matter of what we call section loss. That might be a half inch thick when it begins. And then as things corrode and rust, they get, they get thinner and thinner. Uh, and then as a matter of fact, that they're convex and when the water pressure gets on them, it actually causes that metal to go concave, which means it's failing. It should always maintain that convex look. And once it goes concave, that's, that's your first indication you need to replace this because it's lost some section. It won't hold.
That's great. Thank you. And where is this picture?
This is actually, this is actually on the Greenway Trail. Uh, as you go past the treatment plant, the compost yard and the treatment plant as you're headed toward town, there'd be something that looks like a big concrete bunker just to your right, uh, Northview Street. And then if you look to the left, this is down the hill.
Okay.
This is our first pump plant to go in and the last one to come out. And it's also our biggest one.
Okay.
It, it, um, three hundred and thirteen thousand gallons a minute.
A minute.
A minute. Three hundred and thirteen thousand gallons of milk a minute. That's what I tell elementary school kids to, so they can get some, some scale of that.
So what, why are you telling us in that, in that way?
Just trying to create a middle image.
Okay, great. Uh, any questions from anyone on that one? Okay. So, City Clerk, I asked you to read the last one.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky approving a residential infill agreement between the city of Paducah, Kentucky and the EMD Properties LLC for LeBarre subdivision and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement and all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves a residential infill agreement between the city of Paducah and EMD Properties LLC for the LeBarre subdivision for a period of eight years with a total rebate not to exceed one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-six cents, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved.
Sorry, sorry, as I ordered.
Second.
Uh, Rick, this has been a long time coming too.
Twenty eighteen. This, this project was started in twenty eighteen. Liz Domaine started this, uh, and originally it was in the county and, uh, she annexed into the city. Uh, she has completed all of the infrastructure, uh, in place and we've accepted that for maintenance because it's one hundred percent complete. Uh, it's all been inspected and it's ready to build. And, uh, this was something that, uh, she was expecting for this. Again, it was started in twenty eighteen.
Right.
And, uh, so now she's, she's ready to go, uh, for this. Uh, it didn't follow exactly the sequence of, uh, annexation slash, uh, infill, uh, let's see, annexation incentive, but she's met those requirements and so, and I know you've had conversation and, and we've had conversation with this and so, uh, this, this project's ready to go.
I'm glad to get this one behind us. Um, and, um, is this, um, uh, this kind of agreement is, I don't know if this is the right terminology, but, but this is the kind of agreement that we would do with another developer, right?
We've, we've done them in the past, yeah, as long as, I won't say, go back to, uh, two thousand and eight with some of these agreements. Some of the first ones that were done were across from, uh, the Grove. Plantation Village was the very first one off of Perkins Creek Drive out behind, and then Strawberry Hill, that was the very first one we did.
This is the first one we've done in a while though, isn't it?
It is, yes.
So is it maybe time that we meet with developers to remind them of these kind of incentives that we offer? Just to get more housing going?
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, as far as, it's, I would, I would probably look at the process. The process is kind of difficult to follow, uh, from municipal order and then, uh, you'll have the developer initiate something, but not necessarily follow through. And then there's timeframes. And when those timeframe runs out, then that kind of falls off, off the radar and then they want to put it back on the radar. So it, it needs, it needs a little bit of attention, but it's something that is, you know, should be left up to the administration, whether these things are, are, are the things that we need to be doing or, or other things. I'm, I'm not sure.
Is that something that with, I'm afraid I'm gonna call it the wrong thing, the Jump Start Meetings?
Kickstart meetings.
Kickstart Meetings, that we could maybe look at from that aspect on how to make it simpler and have a meeting with developers to try? I mean, obviously, we talk all the time about the need for more housing in Paducah. If we could offer incentives for some developers to be looking at it.
That would be a great thing to put out there for Kickstart Meeting, uh, as far as, uh, putting that in front of them initially. But we would want, we as staff members would want to be very careful, not necessarily to make commitments, is just saying, we're putting it out there for you to consider, but we as staff can't make that commitment. That, that has to come before you all, as, as we are this evening.
I think what I hear you saying, if I'm reading between the lines, is, you know, it's a, it's a big commitment on the part of the city, you know, to give this money back. And there's a lot of requirements from the developer to make sure that we will in fact accept the streets or accept.
Right.
Am I reading that correctly?
Well, I mean, as far as their, as far as their improvements, you know, we, we always consider what are the city's improvements. You know, we, we take the, the streets, the curbs and gutters and the sidewalks and the storm sewers. But we don't do the water and the sewer. That's, that's other agencies. And so what we look at is, are those things that we would have maintenance responsibilities for that would be part of this agreement? Just for example, this one this evening was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay, for that, that's the ceiling for that, but they have more than that in it because of the water that they had to put in, the sanitary sewers that they had to put in. That's over and above that.
So what's the one ninety-seven, ninety-one?
Excuse me, I'm confusing two subdivisions.
Okay.
I'm confusing two subdivisions. I got a lot of numbers. The one ninety-seven is what, is what she has actually in the infrastructure cost, of which we have support documents for that.
But this is money that she's recouping that otherwise she wouldn't be, she would still have to put it in if she's gonna.
Yes.
Develop a subdivision so that she's eligible for some reimbursement.
She came into the city because she could get this back.
Absolutely. So I mean, that's a great opportunity for us. If we're really serious about growing our population, we're really serious about increasing housing, it's a great opportunity to work with local developers to do that.
It's a tool that, yes, can be used that way.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, she has a time limit on getting that.
Uh, yeah, well, for eight years, she will receive the tax, for example, the taxes that we collected in this year, property taxes, she'll get this year and then seven years after that. And then, and then the city will retain all the tax money after that.
And then that's been an issue too, as to when that starts, right?
Yes, yeah.
You know, because the projects take longer and.
Well, for, for like Paducah, Paducah doesn't necessarily build residential housing really fast like, you know, let's say Nashville or some other place. Uh, the incentive is for the real estate to be turned into improved property, maybe a five hundred thousand dollar house or a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. Like, right now, you're just, you'd just be circulating the property tax on the land itself, which doesn't necessarily give you that bigger return. But once that property sells and then somebody builds, you know, an improvement, let's just say three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, then there's a, there's a pretty good return on that money is from a property tax point of view. But that's why we put a ceiling on it. We don't want to give back more property tax than what they actually have involved in it. And so the ceiling on this is a hundred ninety-seven thousand. That's the most they could recover. So it incentivizes them to build as rapid as possible. The more property they build and sell, the better off they come at, at the end of an eight-year period.
So, uh, you know, back to Commissioner Wilson's point, I mean, I do think that we should organize something after the first of the year with residential developers and just hammer this home somehow.
I think promote it and ask them to re- really push them to look at ways that they can make it work for them.
Do we have a?
Make it ea- and we should make it easier if it's really that hard.
If I was to make a rec- if I was to make a recommendation, this would be a model to make it easier rather than engage the developer while they're thinking about it. Tell them, get all of your stuff completed, built and accepted, and then start it. It makes it a lot easier than memorandums of understanding. And you say, if you do this, we'll do this. You know, it makes it real easy this way because if we start it like this, it just starts like that. Now they don't have to wait on construction of the road. It's already done. Get it, accept it, and then maybe put it out there. It makes it really easy.
I think we should look at it and maybe work through Lindsey on Kickstart Program.
I'm making a note, so we'll, we, we need to get something going on.
Your planning's got some stuff planned around this as well.
Okay.
Developers know about it. It's in the news thing. It's been go- been going on.
Yeah, but sometimes it helps to hammer it back.
Oh, oh, I agree.
You know, we may, you know, just to make them reme- have them remember.
But you just said we haven't done it in a while, so it's time, I think, to really promote it. We have done it in the past, but it's been a while.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Definitely.
Okay, great. Thanks, Rick. Um, okay, we don't have to call roll. So, are we finished with, uh, okay. So we have, um, we only have one more item on the agenda, but it's a pretty important one. We have, um, our Director of Finance, John Perkins, here to give us a high-level financial overview over our, over our, of our last fiscal year, which, uh, which ended June thirtieth. So we're in our next fiscal year, which began July first. And I think it's important for, uh, all of us to understand, you know, the how the city's been doing, where our primary revenues come from, um, and, and really how the city's performing, uh, you know, both from a revenue perspective as well as the management of expenses. So, John, welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Commissioners, which one of these mics is real?
Both of them.
Okay. They're gonna have to share with me. Um, Lindsey, how does this work?
The one on the right should take you forward.
All right, so the mayor's asked me to come and share with you all. Excuse me, I've had, I've been fighting with my cold for a while, so I'm, I'm trying to keep my voice up here, but. Anyway, um, we're talking about the general fund tonight and, is this working? Did I do this right? Okay. Anyway, so several years ago, when the mayor, uh, came on board, he and I sat down and we figured out, um, a good reporting mechanism for, um, in a monthly basis. And what this does is basically takes all that, puts it all together in one place. And we don't look at it on a monthly basis. We look at it on an annual basis. You can compare years to years. And so we've got three years of, of data. It's, it's hard to tell where you've been if you don't know where you've been. So that's kind of what this is about. So what I'm gonna do is go through the revenue side and go through the expense side or expense side, expenditure side, and I'll compare the two together, see where we're at. So we'll start with the general fund, revenues, and I think you have the packet in front of you there. Um, basically what this shows you is all of the revenue that the city collected in each of these three years, fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Now, the one, the year on the far right, that's the most recent year that ended June of twenty-three. That looks a little on the high side. I tried to, you see the asterisk there? That has four million dollars of COVID money in it too. That's not gonna happen every year. So if you were to take that four million dollars out of there, you could see it'd be more comparable to the years before.
The twenty-one and twenty-two not have any COVID money in it?
Well, I was afraid you were gonna ask me a question, so I was ready for you.
Always. I usually don't on this budget, but.
No, no, we, we talked about that. Um, under the accounting, we may have gotten the money from the government in twenty-one or twenty-two, but you don't get counted as spent or received until the year in which you've spent it.
Okay.
So in twenty-three is when we actually spent the money.
Spent all of it? Okay.
Yeah, almost all of it. Does that make sense?
We, we haven't spent, have we spent all of it?
I think we spent most of it, Missouri Stormwater, a big chunk of it, yeah. Stormwater and, um, Civic Center. I'm right on that. Looking at you, City Manager. You're shaking it, yeah. I think that's right.
Yeah, on the ARPA, yeah.
Yeah, ARPA. ARPA COVID, yeah. Anyway. Then, uh, in each of these monthly KPIs, uh, that we've produced, we always were comparing budget year-to-date, actual year-to-date. And what we're gonna do here is show you each of those four top largest, uh, revenue sources in the general fund by account. The first one could, shouldn't be too much of a surprise, payroll tax. And again, um, can't check it out. This is what employees pay. Employer, of course, collects it and they remit it to the city on a quarterly basis. If you were to look at fiscal twenty, it would be a little bit less because we're right in the middle of COVID. Twenty-one started coming back out. Twenty-two and twenty-three would come out nicely. And the average growth is in the last couple of years is actually eight percent. It's not that bad. That's, I think, kind of, kind of on the high side. I don't think that's gonna get too, I hope it does.
Payroll is, wages have gone up too.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Um, inflation has, can be your friend. Um, inflation has, can be your friend and, uh, sometimes it's not. In this case, I think eventually we may see that even more true next year, the year run right now, because people have, uh, obviously the, the market is, labor market is so tight that, uh, unemployment rate's really low, full employment plus, and people are demanding more money and getting it, and so that's, it's gonna be, you're gonna see it here, too, I think. The next slide, I want you to see the biggest employers in town. It is like the top ten based on bodies, number of employees, and this could be a combination of full and part-time people. So just to give you an idea of what, what that looks like. This makes up, we believe, around twenty-three percent of total employment, about six to five hundred jobs or so, again.
What percent?
About twenty-three percent.
Okay.
Again, that's not scientific by any stretch because when people report to us on payroll tax, they may say, in the quarter that just ended, oh, we paid twenty-three people. Well, those twenty-three people they paid, three of them have gotten replaced and fired replaced, so there's really only twenty people. So let's take it for what it's worth. This is gonna get you close. But what we've seen for many, many years, the top, you know, three or four or five there, they don't ever change. Always the top.
There's a couple of points that I'd like to jump in here and just make here, and when John and I were working through this presentation, or he was working it up and, you know, so the point here is that, uh, you know, the city, uh, you know, payroll taxes are number one tax revenue. So, everything we do relative to economic development and job growth is what drives, you know, growth for the city, you know, in terms of payroll taxes. That's why it's so important, you know, obviously, for us to recruit, uh, businesses within the city and to help, you know, younger businesses grow, to try to enable growth whenever we can. I mean, this is, this is twenty-three percent, but, you know, uh, the, you know, the other edge of that, other side of that coin is the seventy-seven percent come from, you know, all the other businesses that we have in town, so, um, you know, it's really important, you know, we did an economic development deal with Vitaeck Windows this last year, um, you know, helped them, uh, take down the, you know, the old nursing home out there on the south side and, um, so, again, it's just reemphasizing what we already, all, all of us already know, but, um, you know, this is very important to the city.
Well, they chose regional, local hub and also some, a lot of shopping.
Right, what's GMRI?
I knew you were gonna ask me that question.
I knew you knew.
Anybody wanna venture a guess what that is?
Home Depot?
Nope.
Restaurant chain?
Yep, restaurant.
Told you that, I told him that.
Oh, you told him. I was gonna tell you, but you didn't get close, Arce stands for restaurant. I don't know if the rest of it stands for...
Wha- what is, what's GMRI?
It's a red, chain of red lo- of restaurants.
It's like a parent company.
Which chain?
Red Lobster, Olive Garden. Non-chamber members. Um, a couple of other names under that parent company.
What'd she say?
Nothing.
You don't know that.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, you mentioned the Vitaeck, they're actually on it.
I'm glad they're here.
Did you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was some of the ARPA money, too, that incentive.
Right.
That's true.
So, you know, it's money well spent, I mean, essentially.
Okay, so the next, uh, these, um, revenues are listed, largest to smallest, and this one is the insurance premium tax. Again, it's, it's pretty steady. You know, it was the year before this that we raised our rate from six to seven. Now, this should be seven for each of those years. We don't have any control over what they pay, this is all controlled by the state. The only thing we can do is we know who's paying us. We never know if they're paying the correct amount, that's up to the state.
Do they audit, does the state audit these people?
Yeah, they do. Right before nine one one happened, we were actually working with the state and other second-class cities, and the city of Paducah with others were gonna offer money to give the state more money to go audit more. I think in the city of Paducah, believe it or not, there's like over seven hundred insurance companies that do business here.
Wow.
Si- city, um, statewide, I can't remember, there's about thousands, and we figured out, again, this was twenty years ago, they probably audited maybe fifty a year, and there are probably, let's say there are five thousand of them, you'll, you'll never get around to them all, so.
Does they ever report back on any of the results of their audits?
Yeah, they send us a check if there's money that paid off. That's the only way we know, because I think specifically in KRS, it says cities cannot audit them, only the state can.
It's insurance lobby, I guess, did that.
Well, and the trick on that is, the, the tax is actually on the company itself, it's not really supposed to be on what you pay in, but that's how they've worked it out, where it shows up on your bill. And then they get a collection for doing it. Okay, business license, uh, it's the most obviously affected by COVID. In twenty-one, we were just coming out, so it brought us this way down, but now it's back to normal in twenty-two and twenty-three.
So I wanna make a point on business licenses, this is not a deep discussion I wanna go in tonight, but, but we haven't had, we haven't looked, business licenses, I, I don't think they're keeping up with inflation. Um, I'm gonna make a general statement, uh, and I think that's because of the way that it's, the levels that we have, uh, once you get up to a certain level, there's no more tax paid, and we had, that hasn't been adjusted for inflation in many, many years. And I don't know if it's twenty or whatever, and I've just called that out as something that we most likely shouldn't evaluate at some point in time.
So, you're talking about like primarily based on sales or is it based on...
You know, John could take us through a discussion and, you know, sometime and explain it all to us.
Do that maybe for our...
Yeah. But, um, but I think, um, I think it's something that, um, I just wanna make everybody aware of it, so.
Okay, the next one is real estate property tax, and it's probably one of our most stable taxes that we have. Houses can't move, so they get taxed or sold if not paid on. And this is one the commission's been very good about, we've been taking, uh, a four percent increase as we could in the last several years, which is maximum under law. However, uh, our rate keeps coming down and has for several, several years, and Bill Dunn's has done a really good job of getting everything assessed, so I think you're gonna see fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five, that would probably slow down, I would guess, unless inflation kicks back up and the, depends on what happens in the real estate market, of course. But this only, uh, it's the most talked about revenue, everybody talks about it because everybody lives in a house that has property tax on it, one way or the other, and it only makes up between nineteen and twenty percent of our revenue. And so payroll tax can, it makes up, payroll tax is about three and a quarter times more revenues than property tax. People get confused when they come at the city hall to pay their taxes and, you know, we've raised your taxes, what you gotta remember is about three-quarters of what we collect, the city doesn't keep, that belongs to somebody else, and so...
It's stark, I mean, when you do look at your bill, it's stark how tax is high, but the city's portion's very low.
Yeah, if you, if you were to build a graph of lo- the city's levies doing this and people we collect for, it's going this way. Opposite of us. But they're in a land law, they're, they're not, they don't have as much territories we do, in their department. I thought this might be of interest for you to see all four of these put together over time, so you can see how starkly different the green, which is payroll tax, is as compared to the rest of them. Takes the other three all together, even if it touch the payroll taxes, the payroll taxes is critically important to this. Payroll tax in fact, by itself, makes up forty percent of our revenue. This group, uh, all together makes up about eighty percent. And I took those four taxes we were talking about, I just took them all together so you can see them together as a group. Again, that makes up about eighty percent of revenue tech for the general fund. Tried to color code these so they would be obvious. Revenue expenditures, this, again, is the picture of revenues over the years. Again, on the far right, you're gonna see about four thousand dollars in COVID ARPA monies in there, it's not normally there.
Four million?
Yep, what did I say, four hundred?
Four thousand.
Yeah, yeah, four million. So, it would be more comparable over time. And then in that KPI report we do every month, we look at four biggest departments, we're not picking on anybody in particular, they just happen to be the biggest four, and as pointed out to me tonight, they're the best four. Anyway, you can see over time, uh, how we've done. Fire, public works, parks. And then we took all four and put them together, it leads to the growth as a group.
I mean, just let that sink in for a second, you know, with our bigger, biggest, uh, categories of expenses, I mean, it's police, fire, public works and park. I mean, you know, those are services that, that we provide to our citizens and, you know, that they depend upon us and, uh...
What's, great interest to me, I, when I did the analysis on this, the four biggest departments make up about sixty-five to seventy percent of general fund expenditures. Those four revenues that we showed you, they make up between seventy-eight and eighty percent of revenues, so they're about the same. And so if you get, if you get hammered on the revenue side, it hurts, it hurts the big four, it hurts everybody, of course. It's interesting to, that's how it works out. And I wanted to give you a comparison, so you can put them side by side. Greens are revenue, of course, reds expenditures, and we've been, last, in the last several years, where the greens is ahead. Again, if you look far right, each of those two columns has four million dollars in it, I'll show you one without, that's more normal. But in each of the years, uh, the revenue has stayed ahead, which is a good, good thing.
That's good.
Not to say it's gonna always be true, but...
It hasn't always been true like that in the past, right?
It has not, that's correct. Now, we've been, uh, the economy's been pretty decent as far as like recovery recovered in Paducah, and then because the economy's recovered so quickly in so many ways and labor market's so, so tight, the city has not been able to fill all of our slots, and so the red has been, you know, kinda kept in place because we're almost always probably ten, I'm guessing, ten percent down, may not that, five percent down, unemployment, I forget the number exactly, so we're not paying people that are not there.
I guess the point is, you know, the whole thing, I mean, the city's performing well, but it speaks to the vibrancy of the community, the, you know, the, uh, the health of the businesses, um, you know, people moving in, um, real estate selling, uh, buying, people building houses, I mean, all of that is, I mean, all the things that we work on and try to, you know, make sure that happen for the future, you know, directly affects our bottom line, so.
And also, if we're understaffed, the hard work the employees are doing, too, for to pay growth.
Glad to answer any questions that you have asked, if I could.
Everybody good? I think we're good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I think we're gonna beat Lindsey's prediction here. Any comments from City Manager?
Uh, Mayor Commission, uh, just would like to remind you and the public that next Tuesday evening, we have the Christmas tree lighting downtown, wanna invite, uh, everybody down, uh, to that, uh, there on the riverfront, uh, right across, uh, from the newly opened parking lot, uh, where we've got, uh, the big, uh, Christmas tree, uh, ready to go, and we're at five-thirty, is that? Five-thirty is the tree lighting, so. Uh, and then the next day, uh, official opening of the lights in the park by Paducah Power out at Noble Park.
I was just noticing that's the night before Thanksgiving.
Yep.
You know, so, tough timing.
It's a great event, though, because you can take a walk in the dark underneath the lights in Noble Park, so it's a really great, great event, invite everybody to it.
And because of the Thanksgiving holiday, City Hall and City Services will be, uh, on Thursday and Friday, or, or holidays, next week.
Okay, great, anything else, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any comments? Okay, I'll, uh, we don't have an executive session tonight, we will have in two weeks, we got some things, uh, that we're gonna be talking about a couple of weeks, but, um, tonight, uh, we had an abbreviated meeting and so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bright?
Aye.